I don't know, we'll give the order if you please stand for the pledge. That sounds good. Joanna, can you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Tony David.
Here.
Ryan Rimmel.
Here.
Libby Wyatt.
Here.
Fritz Duns. Vanessa Batum.
We have a call. I don't think we have any changes to the agenda, do we? Okay. You do approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? And we need a motion to approve the June sixteenth minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Abstain? Hey, no old business, so new business, we have, Council will consider a special event request for Blazer Eighty-Eight Foundation's sixth annual charity ride for Saturday, August sixteenth, and I believe Stephen Daniels is here for that.
There you go. Stephen Daniel, representing Blazer Eighty-Eight. You've got the schematic regarding the mapping of the parking lot. I think it's page five, I think. The one amendment I would like to request is the alley between the the Mexican restaurant, the church, the American Legion, and the VFW for that to be closed down as well due to foot traffic because the big parking lot would be shut down. And I will entertain any questions.
You want it closed down by the bank all the way to the end?
Yes, ma'am.
Patrick, do we have any problems with that?
I don't have any issue. Wow.
It is loud.
I don't have any issues with that, no. We've done that before and it works out just because I know between that event and I think Kami's cause at some point had that closed and it was it was fine. We'll, we'll be escorting the ride also during the day and then come back that afternoon.
And it's nine AM to ten, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
Do they need to let businesses know? Do you guys talk to the businesses around just to let them know that the event's happening and that will be shut down?
I, I have not personally.
Might be a courtesy to do that.
The director, the director that runs this ride, he works out of town, so he's not in town very often these days. So as a courtesy, I represent because we're hosting the event. But I, I could do that, ma'am.
Could you just pass it along or somebody could do that because I think some people park back there
Yes.
with their businesses, so.
Yes, ma'am. I'll, I'll be sure to let them know.
Okay, any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event request for Blazer Eighty-Eight Foundation, the sixth annual charity ride for Saturday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from nine AM to ten PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The pose? Motion carries. Thanks, Stephen. Okay. Next, we have Council to consider an appointment to the redevelopment commission for the seat that was vacated by Amy Lawson. Do we have any other applicants here besides Bob? You? Who are you? Mike? Yeah. Hi, Mike. You want to come up here and talk to us? Unfortunately, several of us don't know who you are, so we're gonna, we're gonna find out. I was hoping everybody would be here so we could talk to everybody, so just tell us a little bit about you and what makes you the perfect person for the RDC.
Well, I don't know if I'm the perfect person. Mike Kelty. My wife and I have lived here in Fortville for twenty-eight years or so. We lived in Colonial Village to start. We moved out to Old Bridge about nineteen years ago. I worked with Toasty on the fire department, volunteer fire department when it was in this building. I was on the department for twenty years, as I said in my resume. I don't know whether everybody has a copy of it or not.
Yep.
I was going through some, some things with my parents. They were becoming very ill. We had newborn grandchildren and it just wasn't working out that I could commit to the new hour commitment in the Vernon Township Department, so I retired.
Sure.
I've been in manufacturing for about thirty-five or forty years, Christ the retiree, but I was too young to retire, so I went back to work. I worked for a manufacturing company on the northwest side of Indianapolis right now. And I love my job. We have four kids, as I said in my resume, if you've got it. They're all grown. They all went to Vernon, graduated, went to college, graduated college. And one of them has two granddaughters right now, so all's good.
Big family. It's growing, isn't it?
It's growing. We had one, number two child get married last October. Number three child gets married in about a month. Number four child gets married in about seven months.
Oh, my goodness.
Pretty soon we'll be totally vetted.
So what, what, what do you think you have special that would bring to the RDC? What is the thing that you think would make a good?
Well, I've, I've seen Fortville for about thirty years. I've seen it grow. I see the potential. I've seen a lot of plans come through and come to fruition. I think there's a lot more opportunity and I think everyone's working on that. I got involved in the community through the fire department. I'd like to get involved through the commission. So.
So you're happy with the growth?
I, I was surprised. Yes, I am. It doesn't appear as though we've tried to emulate anyone. We've tried to be our own person. And I, I like that. I was hesitant to see how the thoroughfare would work, but it's worked beautifully. I
I think we're all hesitant.
I, I, I can't see any negatives to it. I think that's the most visible project that has come through Fortville in a while, so I think that's a credit to the accomplishments. Yeah. Yeah.
I appreciate your interest and, you know, we're gonna try to look at everybody so we get to know everybody and then we'll get back with you.
I appreciate that.
Let you know what's going.
Any other questions?
No, I don't, but I don't know if anybody else does.
No. All right. Thanks for the time.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Sterrett, you want to come up and tell us what makes you special? Which we probably already know, right? I think we do.
Bob Sterrett from Motel Drive. I was really glad to see that there was an opening on the RDC because that's, I was on the RDC about fourteen years ago, thirteen, fourteen years ago, and it was a different town at the time. We had no money. No TIF district. It was just a totally different area. Since that time, there may be some that equal, but I don't think there's anyone that could possibly love the town of Fortville more than I do. It's pretty obvious between all the things that we've done with Fortville Action. I've been on the police commission. I was on the council for a year. Like I said, the RDC, I love what the town is doing. I've been involved with the plans for what Main Street looks like now back in the teens. Worked with Joe. We put on the winter festival, summer concerts. And this is just all from volunteer work, trying to do what's good for Fortville. So I'd like to continue that. I, I have ideas that maybe the RDC could do. I don't know for sure if we can or not because I'm not sure what the RDC is capable of doing as far as what's legal and what's not, but I think that there are a lot of good things now that we have the TIF districts and, and we can do some of the things that should have been done or could have been done over the years if we'd had the funds to do it. I mean, I look at the things that are being approved right now. We didn't have those funds fifteen years ago, twenty-five years ago. It's kind of exciting to see that things could happen, so. I think all of you know me, but you're welcome to ask whatever questions you might have.
I have none.
None for me.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
I don't think that's the only two that we have here tonight, so we'll have to try to make an effort to reach out to the other two.
I think we, we might have one person on the line.
Do we?
Agnes, that might be.
Yeah. Maybe she'll want to talk.
Good evening.
Hi there.
Hi, hi. Sorry for not being there, but I am, I am here.
That's good.
Yeah.
Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, you know, I, I actually, I'm probably the newest member here in the town, I guess, because I recently moved, we both, with my husband, we moved from Florida to Fortville. So, and I always been involved in nonprofits, in, in, actually in the city life, so I did it in Delray Beach where we lived. I was on an art advisory board. I love to give back to the community, so, and I always been interested in that and, and making city more beautiful and, and and a few more, you know, and, and that was the, probably the main reason. So I'm still on the board in, in Florida and in the Latvian community and here in Indianapolis and my, Indianapolis Latvian community, so been a lot of involved in, in these things and always ready to help and yeah, we'll see, but it's, it's, everything is new here, of course, but I love the town. We love the town and would love to be in, involved more, so.
Anybody got any questions for her?
We'll get her address.
What is your address? I, I don't think it's on here.
It's five or six Swan Drive, Old Bridge Community.
Yeah, Swan Drive. Yeah, we've got this on here. So is there anything special you think you can bring to the RDC that?
Oh, I think, I don't know, maybe that's kind of a a little bit of different experience coming from a different state, also coming from even a different country. And because I'm originally from Europe, so I don't know, maybe that multicultural, you know, and maybe bring more in so younger people can be more active in a city and in a town, so that's kind of my, and I am always been interested in, in making city better and, and investing in it and developing, so, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for offering.
Thank you.
And we'll get back to you as soon as we get a chance to talk to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So we'll take that under advisement. Hopefully we can get ahold of the one other one there. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next item, which is is there any discussion about the RDC thing? Anybody want to talk about?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from the last one.
Yeah, I would too. I think that's a good idea. Okay, so up next we have the proposal for the two thousand twenty-six Vernon Township Fire Department budget and Chief Mark Elder will give that to us.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. As hopefully everybody remembers, as part of the interlocal agreement with the Vernon Township Fire Territory, which Fortville and the township are all part of, we bring our budgets before both towns as a part of the township after we get initial approval from the Fire Territory Board. Excuse me. This year's been a little interesting. We had a we held off on getting our final budget draft done because of all the actions taken down at the legislature. We had what we thought was a budget. We had it approved, took it to McCordville, had it approved, and then we found out that evening that we are going to be eligible to apply for the growth appeal one more time, which will probably be the last time. And quite frankly, it's probably going to be a long shot if we get it, but fingers crossed. So the budget I have before you tonight is the revised budget based on the recommendation from our financial advisor, Michael Reuter, who suggested we submit a budget tonight for seven million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand and twenty-three dollars. Eighty-three percent of that will go to Personnel Services. If we get this approved, this will enable us to hire six more people, which we desperately need. What that will do is allow us to put two more people on each shift, which will allow us to put the second medic truck in service with a dedicated crew. Right now, that crew is staffed in both an engine and an ambulance. Problem we're running into at the end of June, I'm not done July's numbers yet because I just got back from vacation, but at the end of June, our run numbers were up ten percent from last year. Our bigger issue is that the number of simultaneous calls we get every month run from twenty to twenty-five percent of the calls, we're on one call, we will get a second call, a third call, and there have been times where we're getting a fourth call, and we just need that additional medic in service with the dedicated crew to be able to keep servicing the community at the levels we're at right now without relying on mutual aid to come in and take care of our area and leaving their areas void of coverage. So again, the budget numbers I have before you tonight includes our request to you to approve both the budget and the growth appeal and the amount of seven million, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars, or seven hundred ninety-nine and twenty-three dollars. And I would welcome any questions that you may have.
I do not have any questions. Anybody have any questions for Mark?
I'm, I'm curious. Is there any reason you think that you're getting more concurrent calls? Are they related or is it just that there's just more people around and there's just more calls?
I have, I'm pretty much a data nerd. And I've tried, we, we analyze it. I can tell you the times a day that are busiest, but there is no rhyme nor reason of when we get, we could go quiet for four or five hours and then all of a sudden we're out four times within fifteen minutes. It may be a good project for a college intern, something to look at, but I mean, it's one of those things you can't call not, you can't schedule your heart attack. You can't schedule your crash. It just, it happens and I'd, I'd love to know why. But no, there's not anything I've been able to identify.
Thank you.
If I could, I'd try to mitigate.
Well, that was kind of my other question. I wondered, did the timing of the calls shift like, like in any sort of correlated way with more calls?
No.
It just sounds like just, just more.
Our busiest times of the day, I think I came back here in January, February, we had our annual report and our ti, our busiest times of the days have stayed pretty consistent from about seven AM until about eleven PM. And then it drops off, but we're still having runs overnight. The only thing that changed from last year was the days of the week that we were the busiest and changed and it went I can't remember which one, I think Saturday wasn't as busy last year as it is this year. But now it is, so it's, yeah, but the times of the days that they're occurring are fairly consistent.
Okay. See, you, you don't need a motion for this, though. You need it for the budget first and then the levy.
Growth appeal.
Okay, okay. So we need to do budget, budget first.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-six Vernon Township Fire Department budget. What was the number? Seven million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand and twenty-three dollars?
Yep.
Next second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Motion care. And next we need to we need a motion for the growth appeal as well to approve it for the maximum levy.
Just approve the growth appeal? I'll make a motion to approve the growth appeal or the maximum levy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'll send this around so everybody can sign. You guys are doing a great job. We're always well informed. Can't ask for more than that. Okay, so next up we have the township report from Flori.
Thank you. Florence May, the Township Trustee. In addition to fire and EMS, and I want to just echo the chief's comments that we really appreciate the tremendous support that we have gotten from both towns and from the community as the department has grown. In, in addition to fire and EMS, the township manages township assistance. And in addition to the number of runs that we get on fire and EMS, we are seeing growth in terms of the number of township assistance requests. Township assistance, we get requests for housing, which includes rental, which includes mortgage assistance. It includes utility disconnects. It includes food. It includes medicine. And I, I know I came last year and talked about this as well. We did the year in review. And normally I come and talk about this in February and unfortunately I was quite sick in February and did not come, but I, I did want to bring this so that you understood what our total number of requests were and how we're seeing the increases and where the increases are coming from. As we see the number of apartments increase and as we see the number of senior living facilities in the township increase, there is a direct correlation in where we are seeing the requests come from. The application process, just so everyone knows, we work with both towns and really appreciate both are very, very good at working with us in partnership that when people need assistance, our number one goal is that children do not go without water, that they do not go without electricity, and that they do not end up on the streets. That we make sure that they are taken care of no matter what the situation is in the homes and that we are figuring out what the path forward is for those families. Township assistance is not long-term assistance. It is short-term assistance to figure out how we get past a dire situation, the loss of a job, a medical emergency, those types of things. It is not an easy process to go through and I will tell you, it is a very hard process for people because they have to swallow their pride when they come into our office. So if you know someone who needs our assistance, please know that we will treat it with the utmost privacy, with the utmost respect, and please let them know to come and help us. If we cannot help them legally because there are tremendous restrictions on what we can do, we will do our best to get them to a place that can assist them or help guide them. For those people who maybe are having challenges managing their finances, we will help them get into budgeting classes and help them get into programs that will assist them get on a path. Sometimes they don't like that advice. But we do, we do try our best to assist people on moving on the forward path. So if you have any questions, please let us know. Please know we are here. It's always, it's hard to say government's here to help. We, we do our best, though. So do know that's there. Also know that at the township, we have the community garden. We have plots that people can come and garden themselves for themselves. We also have farm plots where we are growing to participate in the food pantry and to donate to the food pantry. And we now have, have over sixty participants. It's become a little overwhelming. I won't lie. So anyway, there's some information here about that. We also have a junior gardener program coming. We got a Department of Agriculture grant from SARE and I'm just completely paid for and it's, I've been audit completely filled. And we've got all the little junior green thumbs out there every Friday. I mean, in addition to that, just two other quick items, the Codell Simmons Cemetery, which is now in town limits. If you have not seen, the giant silver maple came down during the storm two weeks ago on Wednesday. It's a mess. It's a big mess. We had the crane out last weekend. The trunk of the tree alone was over sixteen thousand pounds. And it, these are the things nobody warned me I would deal with when I became township trustee. And just taking all the branches down, the branches are still all over the place. It's a mess. I'm aware it's a mess. We are going to get it cleaned up. But getting it out of there was quite the challenge. If anybody would like to see pictures, it was quite the engineering feat. We are working on it. And, and do appreciate all the support. I thought the town owned the path and understand now, not yet, so. The other thing just want to make you aware of, we have it only took five years, but we have finally converted the other half of the township building into finished space. It is now a training and education space. We are now having our meetings in something that looks actually official. And we are partnering with the library to do educational programs there. Its primary use is for EMS and fire training that was, was desperately needed. But as the library really needs additional space to do educational programming, we are also partnering with them. The space is beautiful. The entryway, we made a promise to the Fortville Volunteers a long time ago that the beautiful antique fire equipment would be beautifully displayed. And it is being put into place. And so I know there will be a public showing of those pieces that, that is coming, but the chief and deputy trustee Stacy Nielsen have done a beautiful job on that. So you will all be invited to, to come and, and see that here soon. So thank you very much for
Thanks.
giving me the time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up we have Council to consider a letter of intent with SC Vodner regarding development of the Murcho property east of Old Town.
I can probably lead off with this.
Okay.
And for things, I know that Michael Garvey, or at least I think he was online, is he still Adam?
I am.
Okay. Hey, Michael. So we have discussed this particular project oh, a couple of months back when SC Vodner came and started talking with Adam and Joe. I got involved along with Dennis Otten, Buzz Chrome, with the proposed development with the South Madison extension in accordance with the PUD that was approved as part of the proposed Louth project a year ago, give or take. If you'll recall, the Louth project ended up not moving forward. And I think in large part because we could not come to terms with a commitment from Louth about the development of the multifamily component of the approved development. They were, Louth was ready to commit to the one building on the commercial side, which would be on the I think my direction is right, the east side of South Madison. But they just, Louth could not commit to the multifamily. They just didn't have that part of the project ready to go. The opposite is true with SC Vodner. They have, they are willing to make and disagree this letter of intent. says that they're willing to make certain commitments with respect to the multifamily, how that will develop, when it will develop, and so forth. They do not, though, have, unless something has changed, and Michael will tell me if it has, anything lined up on the commercial, light industrial side to the east of the South Madison extension. So what this letter of intent does is a few things. One, it creates exclusivity for the next ninety days that we, the town, commit to working diligently to develop a development agreement, which will be binding. And say the town commits to do X, Y, and Z with respect to the infrastructure, the extension of South Madison, what that will look like, other infrastructure improvements, sewer utilities and so forth, how that will be funded. TIF would be used for that. Probably property tax-backed, in other words, that's Buzz land. But we would work on those specifics and try to come to terms with a specific development agreement that would have towns' commitments with the infrastructure, but then also SC Vodner's commitments with respect to the multifamily specifically. And then we would also talk about how, you know, what we would anticipate would be developed with the commercial side. But their focus is on the multifamily. Initial discussions with OW Crone's office and looking at the anticipated assessed value, increase in assessed value from the multifamily, what the town would likely need to commit for the infrastructure, somewhere between six to eight million dollars. That's in this letter of intent to that range that we would be in, that it could be do, we need to work out the details. And we would do that if the council and then the RDC approves this letter of intent. But the letter of intent provides security to SC Vodner that the town is going to be exclusively dealing with them, that if we can come to terms on the development agreement, that we're not going to let some other developer come in and get a proposal and we start working against each other. So it gives them that protection. It also protects the town importantly. I know we're always concerned about that, that paragraph four, the development budget. So if the council moves forward and the RDC move forward with the LOI, if we just can't get to a development agreement that works for both sides, the way that happened with the Loth, the Loth project, SC Vodner will reimburse the town for its legal expenses not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. And it's blank because we didn't have the number from Buzz when we sent this copy to you. But Buzz is five thousand dollars, the little highlighted portion there. We'll fill that in. So if we can't reach an agreement, then both parties walk and SC Vodner would reimburse the town for the expenses to try to put together the development agreement, Buzz running the numbers on what that looks like, working with the council and the RDC to try to make this project happen. As far as the project itself, there's a PUD that was already approved for that area. And so that's what the development would look like now. Michael can talk about whether there's any, I don't know that there's any thought of veering substantively from that. Those types of issues would also be worked out in reaching the final development agreement. So the ask tonight from SC Vodner and from me would be authority for Tanya to sign the letter of intent. When we fill in the five thousand for OW Crone, we'll also attach the exhibit A, which is just the map of the property that would be developed. Then we'd get this in front of the RDC for their consideration as well. And next stop would be coming back before you, hopefully with a proposed development agreement that both sides can come to terms with and maybe see some development to the south of town. So, Joe, did I miss anything there? Or Adam?
No, I think the only thing that I would add is I would say there's a high likelihood that the revised plan that they're looking at will probably have to go back to the Plan Commission and Town Council as an amendment to the Land Unit Development zoning. So just be on the lookout that it'll probably be coming forward.
So how long, did you say there was a time period on this?
Ninety days.
Ninety days.
But we also commit to, and this is more on the legal side of things, to having a development agreement together and ready in the next thirty days. So we want to work quickly to try to, you know, if there's a, for lack of a better term, deal to be had here, we don't want to wait. I mean, the sooner that this project develops in a way that the town wants to see it developed, the better for the town. And the same holds true for SC Vodner. The sooner that we come to terms, they can start doing what they can, what they do, namely develop, the better for them. And so ninety-day exclusivity, but the commitment is in the next thirty days, we will have, we'll have a development agreement together and hopefully have terms.
Will this include?
Can we see some drawings? Because the last time there was a discussion where we had the parking lot being on the main thoroughfare. Is that still what they're looking at, is having the parking lot on the main thoroughfare and not on the inside? Because when you drive down Oleo Road, they have the apartments up front on the main thoroughfare, and then they have the parking in the back.
I don't think we're even that far yet.
Yeah, we're not.
I can, this is Michael Garvey. Good evening, everyone. If you can just, yeah, reintroduce the project, if you will. I was one of the owners, one of the primary owners of Loth when this project was initiated. And I left Loth in the area of Q three of last year. And subsequent to my departure is when the project fell apart. So subsequent to that, I reached back out to John Murchow. I have since joined a good family friend who, SC Vodner, Steve Vodner, whose company has built well over ten thousand units in multiple markets across the United States. So I knew that I really liked this project. I quickly brought it to the company. I'm the current CFO, and I will be a personal investor and partner in this project. We have revised it to Adam's notation. So what we have done here is slightly different. Where we're going, our proposal is to do three-story product up on the boulevard to give that height and structure, if you will. And then we have parking fields in the rear to answer, I'm not sure who asked that question. And we will have, our plan today is a hundred and fifty-six units in the three-story product. And then what we firmly believe will be welcomed in the town of Fortville is we have proposed fifty single-story units with garages as part of the project. We think this is a good land planning proposal in terms of it transitioning to the west into the neighborhood. So we'll go from the height on the eastern part of the project, and then the rest will be single-story. So a total of two hundred and six units. The maximum provided in the PUD was two hundred and twenty units. So we're within the confines of that document. I've had multiple discussions with Buzz. We do think the single-story product will carry a slightly higher assessed value, which should help the TIF in the long term. So I think this started as a question with the parking. So we've done the parking in areas in the rear. And we've had a couple of calls with Adam and Joe. And we're putting the garages to the rear of the properties. When you go down the public thoroughfare, the garages will be in an alley behind the project. Or at least they will not face the neighborhood to the west.
I don't know. I just have such a bad taste in my mouth from the Loth thing that it's, I'm uncertain, let's just put it that way, without seeing anything. And I didn't, and I wasn't aware that they had anything ready or had a design in mind. The layout obviously has changed, so I don't really know how to
Well, just to clarify, I mean, right now, if somebody, if SC Vodner or anyone else came in and wanted to build in accordance to what the approved PUD is playing out there, they could.
Right, exactly, yeah.
For all of the differing opinions about that and whatnot. And so that gets to what Michael was just talking about, what Adam mentioned, making some adjustments to that, this single-family component with garages that of course, that'll go back to the Plan Commission, the council will see. And you all will have time or the opportunity to weigh in on whether that change to the current PUD and development plan.
Let me, it is not a change to the PUD. The PUD just stated that it was a maximum of two hundred and twenty units and no more than X buildings. So I think we believe that this applies with the PUD. We believe we've improved, vastly improved from the original plan. So now the neighborhood to the west will be looking at single-family-ish rental units that will have, meet the ordinance of the percentage of materials. We've already designed that to meet the ordinance that was approved with the PUD. But we think for the town of Fortville, this is a superior product than what was even contemplated before. But we believe the parameters of what we've proposed fit within the legal parameters of the PUD and ordinance.
So they came up with a concept for how they would like to tweak the concept plan. And I will say that, in my view, my professional view, the iteration that they came up with most recently is a, probably a better thought-out plan than what was approved. But that being said, is I believe that the language in the PUD would necessitate going back, going back to you all, back to the public for a review of that as a text amendment. Because it's, in my view, a substantial enough change. And I think at first blush, it was an improvement. But lastly, it was simply a concept that they put together, and it sounded like there was even some more refinement that was going to happen. So as soon as we, you know, get a cake that's fully baked, we'll send it out to everybody for consumption. But, you know, we're excited that it's moving forward. And we just want to make sure that the process that we follow is correct and legal.
A few years back, Banning Engineering did, their first assessment of that was it would be hard to sell it as a commercial entity because of the distance we are up, Highway sixty-nine. And if they have a hard time selling the commercial side, what is the backup plan? Is it fifty-five and older? What is the backup plan?
No, we actually, we actually have the commercial slash light industrial parcel under contract with another developer. That developer is contemplating moving his business to the site. He's a resident in Hancock County. I don't know if he's in specifically the town of Fortville, but he wants to move his company here and then build some commercial as well. We've told him that, and not trying to get too far ahead of ourselves, but I know Buzz isn't on the call, but we've told them that they would have to sign the same type of agreement that we've been willing to sign in terms of a taxpayer agreement to commit to what we're building within a certain time period. And they're willing to do that. So we're actually a little further along, in a good way, on the eastern portion. That AV per square foot will exceed the multifamily. So it should be an additive to the overall economics of the TIF.
Thank you. And I would say it's useful to think of this as there are different elements of the project that would work on parallel tracks. So on one track, we would have the zoning and any changes that they might want to do. And then on a parallel track would be the development agreement and a potential bond. And so it's common for these things to be on parallel tracks in order to keep things moving efficiently. But they all do ultimately come together.
So is the infrastructure part of this, too?
Yes.
Yeah, so just to begin, Tony, you asked the question or raised the issue in the Loth presentation, when we had all the conversations about the taxpayer agreement that Michael just mentioned and whatnot, and development agreement. Taxpayer, you know, agreement or guarantee to some effect will be part of that. What we couldn't get with Loth was they only, they had the electrical company, I think, that it was, or, you know, somehow that they were ready to go and they would guarantee that, that that was going to happen there and build that. But they weren't willing to commit to any sort of development or timeframe for development on the multifamily. And that's where the numbers, the risk, I thought, was too great for the town to commit to six to eight million dollars of extending South Madison and kind of the field of dreams approach of build it and they will come, right? This is diff, we've got the multifamily, as Michael said, they're ready to go, they're experienced, they've done that. That, you know, from what I've seen, too, the product looks great, but that's really Adam and Joe's world to advise you on. The numbers, though, of having the commitment that that will be built, the multifamily, and within a certain amount of time, and we've already got the requirements, but how it has to get built, the numbers are really close. And now this is, I agree with Michael, it's a positive development. We're farther along, it sounds like they're farther along on the commercial side, that that just adds additional comfort. That if the commercial comes online with a similar taxpayer agreement on the commercial side that they will build and within a certain amount of time, it's even more comfort for the town that the assessed value of that development, multifamily plus commercial, will support the six to eight million dollars anticipated to extend South Madison and open up that area for development. And I haven't seen the specific numbers from Buzz, but I know, I let Buzz do what he does. And then it does sound, I do know that Buzz is comfortable with the LOI that's presented and moving forward so that we can really get down into the specifics and the details of the proposed agreement. And hopefully be back here in the next month to present a, an agreement that both sides have come to terms on, subject to council and RDC approval.
Well, next month, while the council will have the agreement from them and the commercial side.
I don't know about the commercial side. That's just a separate piece. This LOI just contemplates that SC Vodner is ready to make commitments on the multifamily. And as Michael mentioned, if this, this potential, this developer they're talking to now materializes and gets to a point where we have a separate agreement with them, then I'll keep you informed and, you know, that would be part of it as well. But the agreement that this LOI is contemplating is really focused on, or at least the taxpayer agreement saying, you know, that Vodner is saying that they saying that they will build the multifamily within a certain amount of time. That's, that's what that's focused on. And then also the town's part, working with Joe and Adam on here's the way South Madison extension will look within the PUD and the other related infrastructure that the town would commit to, you know, funding and creating in the develop.
I have two questions, but hopefully I'm not getting off track of this. In the last, in the Loth proposal, it was developing that whole, both sides. This sounds like it's, we're just committing to the one, to the west side of the, we're calling it the boulevard. And so this agreement would definitely commit on one side for resident, you know, residential side.
The commitment, Michael will correct me if I'm wrong. The agreement's gonna contemplate building out the entire, the PUD. Commercial and multifamily, but as far as a taxpayer agreement. You know, Bodnar saying, hey, if you issue bonds down in Fortville for your side of this, you know, on the infrastructure and to extend South Madison and whatnot, and then we just decide we're not going to oops, you know, something came up and we're not gonna do the multifamily. They've got a guarantee on the multifamily, but there, there will be a a, a component there to protect the town, but only with respect to the multifamily development. They weren't in a position, and I don't think are, as we sit here tonight, to make a similar or have a developer that make a similar type of commitment with respect to the commercial side of things. However, we may add that as an additional agreement down the line, but so. So yes, the, the commitment as far as the taxpayer agreement would be for the multifamily.
Okay. And then my second question is, in developing the commercial side, are we going to build in anything? I know this is, we're not there yet. To commit a timeframe of residency for businesses to occupy? Like all these warehouses that we've had and the growth in Hancock County and they're all sitting empty. I don't want that to happen in this kind of development.
That's another question. Like I said, you don't know who's gonna be the developer.
Right.
Right. Town might amonstrate against.
The, the, the PUD and ordinance is drafted is relatively specific in what would be allowed. At the discussions I'm having, because we have the entire thirty-eight acres under contract, so we would be the seller to another developer. They're talking about, as I said, moving their business here and also contemplating building some true commercial slash retail. Which we're an advocate of because we're going to have two hundred and six units across the street. We believe our residents would certainly welcome having amenities in terms of retailers across the street. You're correct, other than the company that will be relocating here, you don't know who the prospective tenants are, but these will be much smaller buildings. These will be ten to twenty, maybe thirty thousand square feet. Whereas the buildings in Hancock County are typically two hundred and fifty thousand square feet up to a million. So these will be smaller users, smaller businesses that would be relocating back into Fortville, which we think is a positive, not only for the development, but obviously for the town of Fortville as well.
I will say that size of space is in great demand and it's very hard to find. So I think it will bring some really good small businesses.
And it's interesting, this is just a sidebar comment, because when I was with Loth, we built large industrial buildings. Well, most of the Indianapolis-based developers avoided smaller light industrial buildings because frankly, they just weren't large enough to generate fees and interest, so. We would even be interested, we being SC Bodnar to build light industrial over there. But another owner or investor came to us desirous of actually buying that eighteen plus acres from us, but I like, we liked their plan. Having retail there, we think would be a win for the town. And I think Buzz would agree and he's run some numbers that the assessed value on that product type exceeds clearly what we would be building on a per square foot basis and would exceed light industrial as well.
After the meeting, Adam, can you email us what's, what's allowed over there? Refresh our memory, because usually areas you have certain businesses where what can be there, what can't be.
Yeah, I can send over the, the approved PUD. Okay, I appreciate it. And, and then the last comment related to that is I haven't seen anything on the commercial or industrial side, the east side at all. Any sort of revised plan, revised uses, only some mentioning that they might want to do retail there instead of the light industrial that was proposed, but nothing, nothing beyond that, but I think to you know, my advice from Libby's, the Libby's point is, it's a good question and it's a good concern because whether it's, whether it's a big two hundred and fifty thousand million square foot building amount comfort or a smaller one here, the the problem that we want to avoid is the same of, of an empty building and so whatever steps can be, be put in place that are mutually beneficial to protect the taxpayer, that you're not giving any sort of abatement in advance or abating an empty building for a long time. We don't want that to happen.
So the letter of intent is just for the residential side, right?
Correct.
Just as a reminder too, the town is under contract with VS Engineering to be doing the trails and the intersection improvement. So they're doing the design work on that now and that's part of an MPO funded project. It's ninety-ten money. So VS is working with Michael's engineer to determine where the stop start point is for their design work. Because the more we can design with the MPO, then it'll help bring costs down some too.
Okay, guys.
Who's gonna, who's gonna build the retail side then? I guess they still don't really.
Well, he has a, they have a different.
It's another developer that's taking down the, or purchasing rather, the entire eastern eighteen to nineteen acres. So their plan is to again relocate their business, which I think is approximately seven to ten thousand feet. That would be more of a light industrial flavor building. And then they have a plan to build a two-phase commercial piece as well that would total ten to twelve thousand feet. And then the balance they would be pursuing as we would, probably doing a design of a building and then pursuing tenants.
So, so sir, what you're describing is that, that you would own the land and you would lease it, you would act as a landlord and lease it to a company who wants to come in and build their own building there?
No, no, no. The, the other developer, that's their plan that we're selling the land to. So what they will do is yeah, they will commit.
They'll be the owners.
Taxpayer agreement to whatever their first phase entails. Their design's not complete, but they will sign, at least I've told them they need to sign a similar document that Alex's firm will be authoring to say, here's our phase one, we'll build that within a certain time period. We've given parameters to Buzz Crone and he has run preliminary numbers on what the assessed value could be based on what their discussions are regarding their phase one.
Sir, just so, I'm sure I understand, what you're describing is that, that your company would, would buy all of the land. And, and as far as the commercial side of it goes on the east side, you would sell, you would kind of sell up portions of that. It sounds like, it sounds like portions, not, not all of it all at one shot. At least part of it to some other company who's going to then own that portion of the land, own that plot and then build their own building for whatever.
Yeah, full, full disclosure, the structure today is that we'll just call them developer B. Developer B wants to acquire the entire eastern parcel from us. And, and develop it all out over time.
And so why, why is that not part of what we're agreeing to right now? Is it just, you just don't know if it's firm or we don't know?
Yeah, exactly. So what we're trying to do, and you know, Alex can explain this, is to advance the process, part of this agreement with the town is that our company is willing to take the risk on paying external third-party fees to get the whole process advanced. If we ultimately get some part of that reimbursed through a purchase agreement with a subsequent owner, that may or may not happen. But we're not requiring them today to absorb any of this. So we're willing to say, okay, let's all work in good faith, negotiate in good faith, try to get a project agreement executed in the next thirty to sixty days. This LOI, by the way, in our opinion, is quite detailed. I've done these with other municipalities. And the meat of that agreement, I think Alex has done a really good job of integrating into the LOI, so there shouldn't be a lot, a lot of surprises. But we'll sign that we're absorbing the risk of third-party costs to advance the process towards design of the public infrastructure. And then we have a pre-development agreement. I mean, budget that will be sending Joe in the town that would be part of the ultimate public infrastructure.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, sir. Alex, I mean, my only follow-up question based on all of that is last time around, we got all the way to a PUD and even approved it and then came to find later that Loth didn't really have a plan or they didn't, they weren't prepared for the residential side. But right now, we're gonna sign a thing where there's absolutely no agreement whatsoever for the commercial side?
So they're two separate things, right? The PUD is approved, that is zoning ordinance for the town, that this area is developed according to the standards and, and whatnot in that. So this isn't about the PUD.
Right, those right, the standards are established.
Once the PUD was, was established and, and adopted, that's set, right? And so there's a multifamily residential component to the PUD development and there's a commercial light industrial set to the east side, that's there. Where, where we couldn't reach an agreement with Loth was they, the main fallout was they would only commit to developing part of the commercial side for the electrical company that they had, you know, lined up to come in and, and move their business there. They were, Loth was unwilling to sign a taxpayer and a development agreement that would cover the town's exposure for, at least enough of the town's exposure for the infrastructure improvement and the bond with respect to the multifamily. So the numbers didn't work from a town perspective of the risk that if the multifamily doesn't come, there's no increase in assessed value. Those bonds are gonna have to be serviced, but there's no TIF coming in because the multifamily and things weren't developing. The opposite is true here, that the multifamily, as Michael said, SC Bodnar is ready to go, they're willing to execute taxpayer agreement to address the town's risk and, and the investment there. That's what Buzz has looked at. If just the multifamily happens, what does that look like as far as servicing the anticipated debt for the infrastructure that goes through? You will get all of those numbers so that before you make a decision on a development agreement and taxpayer agreement, you'll be able to see that, what the town's proposing, what the anticipated bond issuance and what the Bodnar is committing to do on the multifamily and when.
But for both sides though?
It's just multifamily, just multifamily. We may have as a separate part of that, as Michael was just explaining, depending on how quickly terms are reached or not with the developer that wants to buy the commercial side, the nineteen acres on the other side. We may have a separate letter of intent and taxpayer agreement that would augment, as Michael said and explained, this agreement so that we would have not only numbers anticipated assessed value, increased assessed value and what the TIF throw-off would be on the multifamily, but also with respect to the commercial side. But as we sit here tonight, this LOI is just about the multifamily.
Right, so, so the concern would be kind of split into two. So that it's almost kind of like they're going in on it together with another company, so to speak, so that we'd wind up with other agreements with another company.
We, potentially, yes, I mean, that's what we're talking about here, that, that may be the path that's going on. But if this buyer walks and it's SC Bodnar, we, there may not be another taxpayer agreement on, with respect to the commercial side of things and the agreement that we come back in the next thirty days. You know, or sixty, hope my, my hope is thirty days would be, here's the agreement, here's what the town is committing to do with respect to infrastructure under the agreement, here's what SC Bodnar is committing to do on the agreement. Buzz's analysis of what that looks like with respect to servicing the debt on the bonds that would be issued for that. So but this, so that's what this LOI is, put for a development agreement to be put together, taxpayer agreement, project agreement, however you want to coin it. An agreement between the town and SC Bodnar with respect to building out the multifamily portion and the infrastructure commitment of the town. And the, the, just to reinforce what Michael was saying. SC Bodnar is willing to take the risk of twenty thousand dollars of third-party fees. Namely Bose McKinnon Evans and OW Akron to put together the proposed agreement to crunch the numbers so that we can come back to you, hopefully with an agreement that says, you know, this is what the town's willing to do and this is what SC Bodnar is willing to do, the numbers hopefully work and we move forward, but if, if we can't reach terms, the risk, and we worked in good faith toward this, the town's not going to be out the Bose McKinnon Evans fees or the OW Akron's fees. So that's the risk that Michael was referencing.
When you pass a PUD from a previous developer, how, is it a lifetime PUD? Or does it become a, because things change over the years and that PUD changes, people's needs change. What, what, what's the length of time that for that PUD?
Well, the, the PUD itself runs with the land regardless of owner or developer. However, it is, it is very common, especially in the other jurisdictions where, where I've worked earlier in my career is when there's a new developer that comes in, they have a slightly different vision. And typically need to revise the PUD in what's called the PUD text amendment, where they just make some modifications to it. And that's, that's exactly the direction that I believe we're heading towards here with this one.
Well, no, what I'm saying, things change, just like we wrote a comp plan from Broadway and it's kind of not even fulfilling what, what we thought it was, you know, twelve, fifteen years. What do we know about this PUD that it's still in our best interest and maybe we want to make some changes to that PUD that we didn't know was happening five years ago?
Sure. Well, well, I think to your point is that assuming this comes forward as a PUD text amendment to make those modifications. assuming this comes forward as a PUD text amendment to make those modifications, then if there are things on the town's side of things that we want to revisit, that's the opportunity to to do that as well as part of that.
But once it's developed, you can't go back and change the PUD is what he's saying. It stays, it stays with the land. It's before.
We're making a change before it happens.
And we don't really know what the plan is here, not on the commercial side. So maybe we want to take another look at what we.
I mean, Alex, you need to weigh in here, I think, but what we're building, it complies, we firmly believe, SC Bodnar firmly believes, complies with the ordinance and the PUD as recorded that runs with the land. We don't need a special variance. I think what Adam's suggesting is because we're changing to a single-story product, he wants to bring it back to council, which we're certainly fine doing. But the PUD and the ordinance, you know, run with the land. So if there's a specific change to that, you obviously weigh in at that time. But this land as it stands today is fully entitled pursuant to that recorded ordinance.
And I don't disagree with anything that Michael said there at the end. I haven't seen the plans. I'll defer to Adam as to whether those comply with the terms of what's allowed and required under the PUD ordinance as it stands right now. If the, if it does, then yeah, it can be developed. If it differs substantively or there's a substantive enough change, this is what Adam's talking about, then it could be a text amendment. Or if there's, you know, it could be the development plan, right? I mean, the contract plan, I mean, that approval process is a different part of it, but.
That's really not what we're talking about.
That is not what we're talking about.
Not talking about the concept, but the, yeah, yeah.
Excuse me, this is Austin Bodnar. Hello, everybody. I just, I'm not really a finance guy. So from my understanding was if we go and develop this multifamily piece, will the tax revenues be enough to pay for this TIF that we are trying to get here? So even while we're very confident the commercial and retail piece will come up, if we build this multifamily project, which we spent a lot of time in, believe it, you guys will love our site plan and everything we're doing, will the tax revenues therefore cover some of these infrastructure of Madison and the project that the expansion we're all trying to get done here? That may be the buzz grown question, but.
It's, it's, no, but Austin, I mean, your point's correct. I mean, that's the whole, that's one of the major components of the taxpayer agreement that we would like to be able to move forward with. Subject to you guys signing off on this letter of intent is that, yes, we think that the numbers will will come back to you and show you, here's what the anticipated assessed value and TIF revenues would be just on the multifamily piece and what that looks like next to the anticipated bond that would be issued for the public infrastructure and right-of-way improvements that the town would commit to to making. So yes, that that's, that's really the, the an important component, if not the most important component from the town's perspective of that agreement. And I can tell you from preliminary discussions with Buzz, and I know that the SC Bodnar team has had other, their own discussions with Buzz that I haven't been a part of. I mean, he's the numbers guy, he doesn't need me on there, but I do know that the numbers look close, right? I mean, and and close to where in talking with Joe and talk, my talking with Joe and talking to Adam, we think that there's a way in in looking at the scope and how the the roads and the infrastructure developed, that we can make the numbers work.
Just with.
Just with the multifamily, correct.
Okay.
So the ask is approval for Tanya to sign the letter of intent will fill in the five thousand for Buzz Accrone and the exhibit A, which is the map of the property shown in the multifamily. And then from there, we'll have the RDC consider, hopefully approve it as well. We'll as as Michael said, Dennis and I will work on the draft of the development taxpayer agreement, work with the attorneys for SC Bodnar that are Craig DeValt. We've already talked with those folks several times to get to a final document, hopefully be back in front of you in the next thirty days, saying here's where we are together with Buzz's office on the numbers.
Do we need a motion or?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
A motion to approve the.
To allow me to sign the letter.
Sign the letter of intent?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to allow Tanya to sign the letter of intent for the SC Bodnar regarding the development of Metro property.
A second. All in favor? Oppose?
Uh, nay.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Well, Adam will be in front of the RDC when?
I believe at the next meeting.
Okay.
The seventeenth, Thursday, the seventeenth, I believe.
Is this the one I need to sign?
I'll, I'll send a clean copy.
I was gonna say, because I scratched on it.
Yep, that that has the the Buzz Accrone numbers filled in and the exhibit attached to it.
Okay, enough. Okay, so next up, we have our department reports, Joe. Are we missing somebody? No? I have her down here in public comment.
On both, okay. Never mind, I didn't want to jump ahead.
Turn my mic on here so y'all can hear me. Heath wanted to be here this evening. He had something come up, so he said if there's any questions as far as like the Summer Fest and everything, he'll be working with the folks on Main Street to to get everything that they need to make that happen. He wanted to let me, he wanted me to let you know that he is working on replacing the basketball goals and poles down at the basketball court. So that is a project that he's working on. And then also some concrete work around the new playground area that that needs to be in for the ADA and everything. Dave Thompson, our water and sewer plant superintendent, is requesting the purchase of a new lawnmower. He's been operating with the hand-me-down from the park for several years, and it's pretty much given up at this point. So he's gotten me four different quotes here with the trade-in of the old used mower. Let's see. I'll just take you the highest number here is fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-nine. And the lowest quote he got here was fourteen thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars from Midstate Truck and Equipment out of Greenfield. And then obviously he had a couple other ones, there were fourteen three thirty-nine and fourteen six seventy-eight, so they're all pretty close in that area. But he was asking for approval to be able to purchase the new mower for the sewer treatment plant.
I'm good with that. You need to vote?
Yes, since it's over my spending limit.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion for Dave to purchase some new mower.
Which one?
Fifteen, well.
Fourteen two ninety-nine from Midstate Truck Equipment.
We're not over fifteen thousand?
There you go. That does give us a little leeway.
Second. All in favor?
I.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Hey, Joe, were you, were you guys ever able to take down that tree that I wrote to you about, the one hanging over from the, from the ditch?
He's got contractors, we're waiting on contractor to get out here. I've got some on Stat Street and some other trees that we're trying to get down, but unfortunately, we've not gotten our contractor to get here quick enough. But yes, that one in the ditch is definitely on the list. I had him go over him, I mean, he's and he went out and identified all the trees that need to come out, and he's got, he's got a contractor working on it as soon as we can get them there.
All right, thank you.
The Community Crossing, Matt Ching Grant, Project and Timber Ridge, they've got pretty much all the ADA ramps replaced out there. We did go through last week, walked the entire development, identified some other areas of curbs that need replaced and some sidewalks and some different areas. So they are working on getting me a price on that. We're going to see where we're at in that contract. The paving should start shortly after that. And then I want to work on some additional concrete sidewalks around town. And if you guys have got anything that you feel like is important or a liability, let me know and we'll see what we can do to make those a priority.
Rich, did you give him your list?
No, I think we would just go off the list that people turn in issues on the
Okay.
on the, those should be our number priority because they're turned in, the insurance company can see what issues on the sidewalks are.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Do people, I mean, are people like reporting in there usually?
Yeah, we've got, we've got.
Yeah, I would take care of those first.
Okay, appreciate that. And we're going to wait and see where the numbers fall with the contract for the Community Crossing. I've got a couple of area, other areas that I want to, they can't be part of this contract, but while I've got the contractors in town, I want to have them look at, there's a very small portion of Maple Street where NDOT left off and where it gets real close to Main. There's a little area in there that they didn't do. It's a little rough and coming up in some puddles that guys have had to fill. And then also where they stopped on the south side of Maple from High Street down to Garden, that's kind of a bad area. And I think since everything else is paved, it'd be nice to get those done. And then we are looking at the alley behind Napa. It was paved years ago and after putting in some sewer lines and water lines and all the construction traffic and stuff, but you know, we feel like we need to repave that as well. And I would love to give you an update on the DORA, but I'm all that Alex and Andy give you that good information. Other than that, that's all I've got. I do have a list from NDOT on the Broadway project and the updates on when they're going to get back out there. It looks like seven eleven, they're going to come out and this is Friday and do some asphalt work. And then surely there after that, they're going to start on, there's a, I don't want to call this a punch list, but there's a lot of items on here that they want to complete. And then there'll be some follow-up punch list items where we'll walk the project and look for every little thing that's not.
Okay, I got a question. What was the end of their thirty-month contract?
I don't know. That was an NDOT contract. I have no clue.
Okay, because if if Milestone can't complete it within that thirty months, can we do the same thing, just say, hey, we're going to take part of the bond and finish it ourselves or?
We, that'd be all NDOT. It wouldn't be.
Because I know that we were talking about doing something like that at the gas station.
Yeah.
Rebuilding their bond and letting them finish it.
Wouldn't be doing that either. That'd be NDOT.
Okay, I'm just curious. This could lag on for another.
Well, I hope not. I think there was some additional work that was added to the contract for the Broadway and the Milestone Project. So that I'm sure added some time onto the contract.
So they don't have any end date when this is going to be completed?
Oh, I'm sure they have something in mind. They're going to get us a schedule, but we don't or hopefully it's this week. I think they said they were going to try to get us a schedule for it.
Okay, because like I said, there's no end date that says they're going to do a seven twenty-one, but when do they plan on finishing? There's no thirty days, sixty days, ninety days a year from now. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep. And that's all I have unless you've got something else for me.
Adam?
Nothing for me, Alex. You have questions, anything?
Not here, chief?
All right, I got a few things. I'll get the quarterly report out for a few probably into this week, early next week. That way you guys have it for review before the next meeting. And then during the next meeting, I'll have the public copies out. The surplus Durangoes will be gone in the morning. We got our sealed bids taken care of. They're in the back lot now. I've got the titles from Missy and we're going to deliver them locally here in the morning. I have one position open still, looking for good candidates. If anybody knows of anybody, tell them to get online and do that. I have one officer out on extended time. He's going to be on FMLA. Met with him last week. We went over all his time he's been given and this and that. And there's still a little bit of time that we may need to fill in, which I talked about last meeting, possibly a donation of sick time. I think we're going to wait a little bit closer. Him and I have talked about that to see exactly what will be needed and what won't. Because he certainly doesn't want to to overextend any privileges or benefits or asks or anything. He's very humble about it. But just wanted to give you an update on that. He goes into surgery this week, so if you don't mind, do what you do and and think about him. And then oh, I have a request. I don't have the request yet. I do have an email from the Mount Vernon School Corporation. They want to do like a November turkey trot. And we're going to get together and go over a route. They want to include Main Street, so we might be putting together a like a I don't know, a turkey waddle, turkey trot, turkey, something like that in November that them and I are going to be working on to get the the request put in. So just to let you know, that's what I have upcoming. And then we have Summer Fest in a couple weeks and then Kami's Cause and then Blazer Eighty-Eight. And everything else. So that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
I have none.
Okay, thank you.
Adriana, do you have anything?
I do not, unless someone has any questions for me.
Alex?
Well, Joe kind of teed up.
Yeah.
DORA update.
Yeah.
More for the public probably than for the council. I know we've had some emails about this. The Alcohol Tobacco Commission approved the the DORA, so it is effective. It's in the system and it and it shows each of the restaurants that are participating as designated vendors will receive updated alcohol permits that show the DORA designation. So the last piece to be in compliance is getting the signage up, both the signage on the boundaries and then also each of the designated restaurants has to have certain signage up. Andy has been working on this for four months and by no fault of his, these signs are delayed. I believe the temporary fix, though, just to make sure we're in compliance and we can have the, you know, the DORA in effect for Summer Fest and anything else while we're waiting on the side, that the permanent signs to get here will be to put up temporary signs. And that's fine, it's fully compliant with the law. Just if if the ATC, it'll be the Excise Police, but if the Excise Police come out and and inspect, they would expect to see the signs
Sure.
up on the boundary. And so we'll have those. I think Andy's either got it done already or I know he's working on it. It's the holiday weekend. But so all good news. And hopefully it's a success. And Andy, I'll let you add anything you have. I know.
I will, excuse me. I will be going door to door to all businesses this week, by the end of the week, getting out our temporary signage. And we did order, I did order window signs, decals for all participants that sell beverages, participants welcoming beverages, and then also stickers that will say, sorry, no beverages allowed. So all businesses, restaurants will have those. And then our boundary signs will say, now entering, leaving the DORA, and they'll have our, our, we'll have a logo. Nothing too fancy or crazy, but it's nice looking. We'll have a boundary map sign that will have a double-sided that we'll be able to put up on Main Street showing the boundaries of the DORA. Then please dispose of trash signs will go up on trash cans for all of that. Alex, does the, do the trash dispose of the trash cans or the signage for the trash cans? Do those have to have anything about Dora on that?
No, no, that's not.
And then we will, Fritz, we'd talked about the cups that'll have stickers or decals or on them for participating businesses that sell the beverages, so that way they can go from one business to the other and freely walk within the Dora with those cups. Have you talked, Fritz, have you talked with any other business owners about that or?
Well, the, the cups were just an idea to, to kick off the Dora. Explain that once they, they're gone, they're gone.
Yeah.
But you have to, we have to get a significant amount to make the print cost.
Right.
Mission, but the other is the T-shirts, which Jeremy's going to reach out to you on that portion.
And I have a QR code that I'm putting on the signage as, the signage as well, that will allow people to just scan. I've gone through several times, just trying it, trying it at different angles and different distance and everything. And it takes you right to what will be our Dora page on our website. It'll take you right to that page, give you the description of everything, all the participants, the map, all of that will be included. That way it's easy to look up. We've been able to use other websites from other towns and cities that have this already, so that way you see what works and what doesn't. So I feel like we're in a good place with it all. It's just a matter of getting that signage up and we'll be all right. Any questions for me?
Are you going to do some stickers or something? Maybe they could stick on the cups?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be a part of it. And then how do you guys all feel about us purchasing cups for the kickoff? And then we leave it up to the businesses from that part.
I know Fritz is right. It probably, the quantity is going to make a big difference on.
Yeah, to make it, what I was wanting to do is maybe just bundle it all together, the T-shirts and the cups and just see if the RDC might chip in and cover the cost of doing the signs, doing the legal portion of it, the cups and the T-shirts, which I sent you pictures of them. They're a quality T-shirt. The idea is not to buy a cheap T-shirt where nobody's going to wear them, but a quality T-shirt with the barcode on it and let, you know, all the employees in the TIF wear them. So people, it'd be kind of fun. You could scan their, their shirts. You could have different events, doing different things with the shirts. They could scan it and, you know, there'd be just, you know, there's a lot of different things you can do with it.
Yeah.
Well, the RDC has already given one thousand dollars.
That's what I was going to say. I think they've already given money.
They're, they're buying the signs and the stickers and.
They've already.
But the T-shirts, I feel like, I mean, I saw the T-shirt. It's cute, but I'd buy one. I mean, so why wouldn't the businesses buy one?
All the employees downtown have them and a quality T-shirt looking for every just to have it as a thing. But if you guys don't like the idea, that's fine. I don't care. It's just an idea. No, that's fine. Don't, and don't worry about it. Just don't worry about the cups or the, the T-shirts.
To Vanessa's point, which is a good one, and it's going to be, the law actually changed as of July first that can't require businesses to purchase cups from a specific vendor. We can suggest it. So to you, if you want to, that's fine. And if the town wants to make them available to purchase T-shirts or cups or whatnot from us, that's fine. We just can't require that.
Just pass out some stickers.
Sticker.
Yeah. Put on the cups initially probably. And if they want to get a shirt, let them get one.
So that's fine.
It's just an idea. You don't like it.
And then take sticker off.
That's fine.
Yeah. Yeah.
Question for you, Alex, while we're all here. As far as a couple of restaurants that aren't a part of it right now, what do they have to do to be a, become a part of?
Good, good question. So it's a, it's the, we would need to find, file that designated vendor form, and I can help you with that and get that to you. We'll have Tanya, or I can actually sign it for the town or Tanya sign it. We'll have them sign it. We've filed that with the ATC. It can take anywhere from forty-eight hours to sometimes it seems like forty-eight weeks, but it'll, they'll get them updated.
Okay.
So, yeah, just let me know and we can get that knocked out to add additional, make sure that they've got the right permit and everything is there and then we can get that filed. Thank you.
I got another quick question for you, Alex. We are going to be kind of scrambling with these temporary signs, put them up, and we will be putting up more permanent signs once they arrive and there'll be signs on the trash cans within the Dora. For the temporary use, do you feel like the ones on the trash cans are necessary or just the boundary?
Just do the boundary and the, and the businesses. Those are, those are the required signs.
Okay.
And then let's just get the, you know, other sign, the trash signs are optional. And so let's just get those up whenever and yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy, for all your hard work.
Yeah, I can.
Anything for you.
I can, if I could just add just really quickly, as, as you all know, I do a lot of this when I'm not municipal lawyer. I do a lot of, and I've helped a lot of different communities with the Dora. And what Andy has put together is really sharp and really impressive.
He's very special.
Really great, great work. And, and it'll, and it'll serve the town and the, the restaurants well.
So I talked to Joe about this and I think Andy's doing it. I don't know if it's in place, like that people know to come to you or who like, yeah, you're going to go door to, Dora to Dora, door, door. But like, I guess I feel like, is there, we have an ordinance. The police follow that, but then like communicating with the businesses, I don't know that we have like a yeah, but like a, like a policy or job description or a place for that, you know what I mean? Like you know you're going to do it, but what if you leave, then it just falls through the cracks. So I'm just like wondering, like, how does it stay? How are we going to move it moving forward?
Or, or Libby, like, like if a new business comes in, how are they to know that?
Right, they are just going to go, oh, I'm part of the Dora and they aren't part of the, because they haven't filed the, the paperwork.
As far as like communication and everything, I mean, that's why with our business meetings, monthly business meetings and everything, I mean, I'll do my absolute best with just having those open lines of communication with, you know, Discover Fortville, Fortville Action, all the businesses. I mean, as soon as we know any type of businesses are coming in that might be a part of this or need to be a part of this, then we, then I'll, I'll interact with them, you know, through Adam and Joe and.
Yeah, does it say on the website, the list of participating businesses?
Yes.
Now say, can you put something on the wedge, the webpage?
And yeah, exactly. Who to contact. That. So and then as well, I will put it up in our information board on the, on Main Street.
Okay, guys, thanks for all your effort on that. And next we have some public comment from Ginny Rumpel, Civil Air Patrol USAF Auxiliary.
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Ginny Rumpel and I'm the commander of Fort Ben Composite Squadron. Don't mind our name. We're nowhere near the fort. We've been at Mount Comfort Airport for over twelve years. I've been part of this squadron for two years. And it is the Auxiliary of the United States Air Force. It is a youth program for kids, cadets, twelve through eighteen, to be able to focus on leadership, STEM, aerospace, emergency services, a little bit of everything. I don't know if Andy provided you with a packet that I emailed in. Hopefully there's a few pictures included there so you can see what our cadets are up to. Obviously I'm on the senior member side, not because I'm old, but because I'm over eighteen. And so the senior members have promotion tracks as well. But our squadron is focused on cadet growth. We started two years ago. We meet at the Buck Creek Fire Department, right by Mount Comfort Airport. We have a hangar where we have an airplane. Cadets have O flights, which are called orientation flights, five in their career. And so we have gotten one of our rooms taken away kind of suddenly there. We started two years ago with five cadets on the roster and we have built it under previous leadership and my leadership to over forty-two cadets right now. And we are still growing. We are openly hosting open houses. We have been a part of Fortville's community quite a bit. We've partnered with Fortville Action. Our squadron has taken on the responsibility of Reach Across America and Gravel Lawn Cemetery. And I've met Florence Maeve. We've partnered with the Legion and the VFW. They have been very supportive of us in the community. We participated in Winterfest and Summerfest a couple of years ago. But we are coming to the place where besides losing a meeting space and outgrowing the space that we currently have, they are getting ready to go under construction and we are going to be losing our space. And we have no idea. We were told, well, hopefully we'll be able to get you through July. And we live in that fabulous Mount Comfort corridor where there is twenty thousand square foot warehouses and there is nowhere else. I have personally contacted over thirty different places to try to find a meeting for our squadron. We are a five oh one C. We have to program for every, or fundraise for every programming dollar that we utilize. We're very specific with the funds that we use. We will do missions or, I mean, they're, they're put to very good use. And paying for a space to me is just not financially responsible or feasible. When we have so many other programs that the cadets get fabulous use out of. So my immediate kind of need is, and I talked to Andy and I did, I have spoken with Heath as well. We are waiting to hear if maybe the United Methodist Church that's close to our hangar, which would be the Magic Unicorn Space, so we could retain, you know, engagement. We would not lose any families. We have families from Greenfield, New Powell, Fortville, Fishers, Lawrence and Geist. You drive to be a part of a squadron. They are not all over the place like Girl Scouts or Boy Scout troops. So I know that there is the meeting space, Building B or Room B at the park. And on a temporary basis, if we get kicked out, we were just coming to see if we might be able to utilize that as a five oh one C for a meeting space. And if no other space becomes available, potentially utilize that space until we can find a more permanent space. We meet on Wednesdays. Our meetings are six thirty to nine, but we have pre-programming, things like high altitude balloon challenge where the cadets put experiment vials and they take them to the edge of space. They're working on that right now. We have cybersecurity or Cyber Patriot, which is cybersecurity. We are not teaching our cadets to hack, but they are learning how to function in the cyber world because that is absolutely relevant in today's society. They're learning how to be, you know, working through Windows hardening and Linux and all of the above. We do Color Guard, so we have Color Guard meetings. We've presented colors at gravel lawn. That's very important to us. We try to get out into our community as much as possible. So yeah, I'm just kind of coming begging for mercy because in the land of millions and millions of empty buildings, there is nowhere to go.
I heard the fire department has a really nice new training room.
Yeah. Brand new space. It's beautiful too.
Okay, is it open now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Yes, yeah. Yes. Yeah. And we also have, brand new for a second year. We got funded and we have a robotics team, so they're doing robotics. So I paid a volunteer as a senior member and I think cap is my whole life besides my family and my real job. But we would love if you guys ever wanted to come visit a squadron meeting, just to kind of see what we're about. I shared the pictures, but it is a really, really neat organization and we are always accepting senior members. We have sheriffs, we have firemen, we have pilots, we have moms who, you know, have just joined because they see the value of what the program has done for my personal child, but for all of the other cadets.
Sure.
Just kind of coming and asking if that would be a possibility, if you consider us.
I'm sure, I'm sure we could, yeah. If Florrie can't help you out, we can definitely help you out.
We are a lovely group.
Yeah. 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 It's a great program. Yeah. Thanks for coming. We appreciate that. Yep. Okay. Public comment. Anybody else? Counsel, Libby?
Nothing for me.
I have nothing either.
Oh, I was reading to this NDOT update. So Milestone is going to be able to replace the light any day now in front of Dollar General. But the other, to reinstall where, no, no, in front of Merle, Merrill and Thirty-Six is arrived soon. But then the one in front of Dollar Store is on back order for eighteen weeks. That's four and a half months. Should we as a town maybe buy four of those, set them aside? And if somebody takes one out, we could just turn that in on their insurance and we get reimbursed. But waiting each time for a light eighteen, eighteen weeks or four and a half months, and we've already taken out two of them in less than two years.
I, I thought that same thing when I read through that list today. I think it'd probably be a good idea to have one or two at least on hand. The reason why the one at Merrill's getting replaced sooner is because it's been ordered longer.
Yeah, a long time.
So it just takes a while to get them once. And we found that with, if you'll remember Main Street, when we were redoing Main Street, how long it took to get street lights up there. It was before COVID.
So we can probably keep two in stock and then one goes down. We just order another one and just keep two in stock the whole time.
Yeah. And I will say that, that is to the, the beauty of standardizing, so they're all the same. So if something happens along the Crail or along Michigan Street, that same light will interchange.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do you need to get approval for that to buy two?
I'd have to get some prices and I'll come back when I get numbers.
All right, thank you.
Need a motion to approve assigned vouchers?
I'll make a motion to approve assigned vouchers.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight fifteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much for coming.